I'd like to welcome visitors that we have. Mr. Pockton in. Nice to see you guys. And we go right into our technology report. Oh, there's Jeff.
We're going to do it, Mr. Freeze.
It might have had it after.
Yeah.
We're gonna...
Do you gonna put something? There wasn't anything on my...
Josh's presentation, we're gonna do him.
Oh.
It came afterwards or something.
Sorry, Josh, you're up.
Oh, you are, okay. Actually, I came to Mr. Highlander on Friday. We weren't sure of my classes. I'd like to present something to you, to the board here, from Video Productions. Kind of our gift, in a sense, to the district. I guess as a thank you for the nice studio and everything that you guys signed off on. Had some hiccups along the way, but those hiccups really were not a bad thing because all it did was give us more time. You know, it took forever, like almost all last year, not talking this school year, to finally getting the right person to do it, to find someone who would get that budget. And then I think it was finally October of this school year that they came in and started to install the stuff. And we were ready to hit the ground running. And, you know, we had different plans, and then our video switcher kind of went bad. So we had to wade a little bit from that. Hicks TV purchased that, so, you know, we went through them. And then after we got the video switcher, Jeff Schaefer and me and Bill Murphy, we sat through some training on the video switcher. We've been able to practice with some live stuff. I know Mr. Highlander wanted me to give you kind of an update on plan on the live stuff. We kind of trained the kids on the system. But by the end of the school year, we weren't ready to go do that on a yearly basis as they were preparing for the end of the year projects and things like that. So the plan will be next year to do live video announcements. I'll have to sit down, work out logistics, see the people in my class, see the veterans that we have coming back. But at the very least, I'm thinking Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. But that will take some more planning, but we will, you know, want to do live video announcements on YouTube Live. And we'll just send it, actually, Mr. Schaefer and I have been talking. He, you know, he's such an innovator, he might find ways to, on the Apple TV, just have it ready to go so that teachers just click on a simple app that goes right to the newscast same time every day. But that is the plan, you know, for next year. I welcome, you know, any questions at any time, anything you'd ever like to see. I'm just an email away. Definitely would encourage that. But in November, hopefully this works and we don't have any technical difficulties. In November, I challenged the students, because I have a really good group of students. And in this class, it's not a typical class. If it's student-led, that's the absolute best that it can be. Because the work that they put out is theirs and they take ownership. For as long as I've been teaching this class, students can tell you if I'm the one telling them what they have to do, it makes the year go really long and makes them feel like assignments and everything else. I just want to be a facilitator, give them direction, lead them how they need to be led. Been blessed with a very, very good group this year. So when that happens, you can reach those low points too at any time. So I challenged them, I think I was watching college football at the time. You know, you watch BGSU versus the University of Toledo, and you're getting advertisements for both schools during the airplay while you're watching. I said, "Man, that'd be really cool if we could do something like that for Hicksville." So my challenge to them was, let's create, you know, go out and just start searching for college advertisements. And they found a few that they liked, you know, they kicked around some ideas. They weren't really sure what they wanted. But once they were able to gather their focus together, kind of put some people in charge, I guess before I play, I do want to make sure to get them mentioned. On this, the main two editors, the main editor was one of our exchange students, Adinda Inamah, I think that's how you say her last name, and Alan Crawford, two phenomenal video editors. They did the majority of the editing work on this. Then also students in the class, including also Osama Alakav, our other exchange student, Bronson Graver, J.J. Haynes, Brendan Metz, Connor Myers, Lila Pasquale, Phineas Phillips, Lily Porter, Ashlyn Siri, and Owen Stuckey. So they all worked collectively on this, gathering the different things for this, and just collaborating on what, you know, they wanted to do to make this the best. And I will play this a couple times because it goes by kind of quick. I'll play it at least twice for you. And then after this, I have an email ready to go to the five of you. I will send you a private link to that. And I'm going to send it to the student body tomorrow when we send out our final newscast. I'm going to send it to Aaron Montgomery. This has been a surprise for you, I guess until this day. Jeff and Aaron are the only other people that have gotten to see this, so...
Before you do that, can we close the blinds because it's really hard to see?
Yep.
Turn enough.
Just turn.
There you go. Big difference. Big difference.
That's good.
The bottom was good?
Yeah, they're good.
Wearing off the back of my neck.
I couldn't see your face at all.
All right, so here you go. I'm trying to sound too loud. Like I said, I'll play this twice here. And one other shout-out I want to give to Mitchell Weatherhead, who was able to provide the drone footage both around the school and inside the school. Now, as far as, you know, what is done with this video, that is completely up to the administration and our tech director. And like I said, I'll get this to Aaron Montgomery too, but I'll just play this one more time for you. Like I said, that's just a little gift from our Video Productions class to our district as a just nice little thank you for everything. So, thank you.
I would have, had you not given us that little spiel, I would have asked how much it cost and who had done it. It looks so professional. I would have asked how much the bill was.
Free. Yeah, I got three of those. They do a very good job. And once we got the cameras figured out and the system figured out, the quality is incredible. So, but that's everything from the Apple computers we work on to the iPhones that the kids use, to the equipment that we have here is very nice, but I appreciate that. I will let them know.
Really well done.
Yeah, great job to everybody involved. It was phenomenal.
Thank you. I will definitely let them know. And I appreciate your time and I appreciate your ability to present it to you, so...
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Josh, thanks for your special... Good now? All right. Jeff, you're up.
All right, so school year's winding down, getting ready to collect some laptops. Always a fun time of the year. And then summer hits and busy time for me. Main thing I want to talk about real quick, back in, I think it was January when I was here, we talked about some of the security updates that we had gotten a report from Nowaka listing some of the security issues that they found when they did a scan of our network. And the biggest one was in our network closet and some of the equipment in there that was purchased like in 2007. And so it's going on seventeen, eighteen years old, years old. So I started looking into getting that replaced with round two of E-Rate funds, our category two. Which, so we started that process and we actually moved up a little bit. So E-Rate reimburses seventy percent of the total cost. And so I did, got some bids in. We went with lowest bid. And so that actually is being processed now. And hopefully it'll be probably mid-June, we'll be able to get that all installed. And like I said, seventy percent of that is going to be reimbursed from the E-Rate funds. And so then we'll be able to tighten down the network a little bit and hopefully all that, the buzzwords of all the security that Nowaka's really looking at as well. We've gone to a couple of meetings at Nowaka with Mike and Keith and I and Matt. And they're just kind of guiding us through some of the things that we need to do. So trying to really see on top of all that to protect us and all of our information. And that's it.
Oh, wow, that's really good.
All right.
Thanks for always being on top of that, you and your team. I appreciate that, Jeff.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, later on, we'll be approving that contract that he talked about that was bid out. And seventy percent of that rather large dollar amount will be refunded through the federal E-Rate program. So it really helps to soften the blow to the district. It's quite a bit of money.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And a year or so ago was a sixty percent refund. So they bumped that back up. At one time, it was seventy, maybe even eighty, but...
I still think you were eighty.
Okay, we had been seventy, it went down to sixteen, backed up to seventy. So that ten percent makes quite a difference.
And that doesn't vary by school district, right? That is...
That percentage does.
It does?
Yes.
Yeah, that's based on free and reduced lunch numbers.
Like so many things, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, then, rock, paper, scissors? Yes, I'm ready. Let's see.
Angie's just coming to it, yeah.
Yeah, I want to introduce you to some of our guests today. Right here, we have Brooklyn Graver. Tonight, we are going to be looking at, or we wanted to introduce her to you since she will be our new third grade teacher. And then we have Michael Myers, who will be our high school intervention specialist. And somebody you're going to see on the docket tonight is, I don't know if more than one way, but is it just one on there? Okay. Christine Steeman, she is going to be our new intervention specialist for second, third grade. Just newly hired.
University Girls Basketball.
Depending on your guys. So, as you know, Kirsten is not here tonight, so I'm going to go ahead and give you her principal report. So we just completed our first year of our newly designed structured literacy program. It has been structured to align more with the science of reading and replace our formal title services. Jamie Altman takes a beginning-of-the-year benchmark data and divides students into seven small groups based off that data by the skills that they need to improve on. All teachers become intervention teachers for a thirty-minute block during the day. No new information is presented during this block. Students in yellow and red are progress monitored each Friday. So small groups may change according to if students are showing or not showing growth. Students are benchmarked three times a year. Some of the data, if we're looking at the beginning of the year compared to the end of the year, in kindergarten, the beginning-of-the-year data showed that thirty-nine percent of our kindergarteners were at benchmark. By the end of the year, we had ninety-two percent of our kindergarteners were at benchmark. First grade, the beginning of the year, fifty-one percent of our first graders were at benchmark. And by the end of the year, ninety-two percent were showing proficiency and at benchmark. A huge thanks to Jamie Altman for analyzing the data weekly and placing the students in groups according to the need of their skills, as well as her team and the classroom teachers for their flexibility as this new program has been a shift to what we have done in the past. We have Meet the Teacher coming up this week. And we're going to be, it's been a tradition for many years, and it will be happening on the last day of school. Students in grades kindergarten through third grade get the opportunity to travel to their new teacher for some activities for about forty-five minutes. On Friday, third and fourth grade students got to participate in a yes day that was created for them from a variety of suggestions that those third and fourth grade students offered through Google Doc. The morning was kicked off with a Cadafor assembly of teacher-student challenges. Some of the day's activities included cupcakes and ice cream for breakfast, balanced houses, a choice of their lunch, and a trip to Defiance Splash Pad. Teachers and paras were treated to a drink of choice from Amanda Lee. A huge thank you to Mrs. Montgomery for always creating fun memories for our students.
All right, well, I, first of all, I know none of these three directly linked to the middle school, but I just want to say welcome, all three of you. I think these are three awesome, awesome people that are going to be great additions to our district. So welcome, we're excited to have you. So I want to give an update about some of the incentive-based events that we had in our middle school lately. I want to start off by talking about the shake. We're always so excited for our sixth-grade shake. We did that on May ninth and tenth. I want to thank all of our sixth-grade teachers. They put so much work into this event. I really want to thank our judges for taking the time out of their schedules to make our event so special. And I want to thank the Huber and the Hicksville Cornerstone Church for letting us use their facilities as part of the different rounds of the shake. It was so exciting watching our students learn, grow, and they definitely came out of their comfort zones to do this shake. And it was really, really good for them. We were really, really proud of how all of them participated and competed. It was awesome. And then a big congratulations to our winner. Our winner this year was Kayla Wonderly. So we want to say a big congratulations to her. She did an outstanding job and won our sixth-grade shake this year. Next, I want to say congratulations to our fifth-grade students. They had a very successful etiquette dinner. Our students were very well-behaved, well-mannered, and they enjoyed an awesome meal. Special thanks to St. John's Lutheran Church for hosting, the many volunteers who helped cook and clean to make the event possible, and to Mrs. Turnbull, who really led the event, and all the fifth-grade teachers for helping to plan and organize the event. It was awesome for our fifth-grade students, and I really think they enjoyed it, especially the kids who went and got seconds and thirds for the meal. To continue, I want to say a job well done to all of our seventh graders. We started a new event this year in our seventh grade. It's a Shark Tank event. I don't know how many of you guys watch Shark Tank, but our students really got into it. They were in groups of four or five. They created a product. Some really created different things, some kind of innovated some different things. And they made a presentation to pitch to investors, and then they presented to the Sharks, who invested pretend money based on their products and their presentations. I want to thank Mrs. Cunningham, Mrs. Tier, who kind of led the whole event, and to all of our seventh-grade teachers for really contributing to make this event so special. I want to say a special congratulations to our winners, Braylon McCain, Sophia Miles, Amber Lynn Shaw, and Mason Lambert for winning our Shark Tank event. They created a product called Seasonal Desserts, where for each season, they had a special dessert. They were all like gluten-free. Their presentation was awesome. They were really good. Anytime you give me food, I'm going to invest money in you. But they did a really awesome job with everything they did. And they might like seriously take it as a business and really might be successful. It was really, really good. So congratulations to those four. And then lastly, our eighth graders returned from their Washington, D.C. trip late on Saturday night. They left early Wednesday morning. And from what I heard, they just had an outstanding time. A big thank you to Mr. Klausing for planning the trip, organizing it. That's a lot of work that he puts in. So I want to thank him and to all the chaperones that attended to make the trip possible. And a big thank you to John and Donell Myers at the Hicksville Pharmacy. They donated water for our students to have over the trip with. And as hot as it gets, as much walking as they do, that's very important. So a big thank you to them. I want to thank and congratulate all of our track members on a great season. They did a great job in the GMC meet here at the school last Tuesday, May fourteenth. Our athletes did a great job, our coaches did a great job. And just overall, our team really improved throughout the year, and they represented our school in such a great way. To close, we have a lot of fun things coming up to end the year. Middle School Award Day is this Thursday, which is our last day of school. We have different park days planned for the different grade levels, some pizza parties, different celebrations. One includes our seventh and eighth grade incentive at the Putt-Put Center in Defiance on Wednesday afternoon. A big thank you to our Hicksville PTO for donating to make that incentive possible. So I just want to say a big thank you to everybody, our parents, our staff, our students, the administrative team, Mr. Countryman. It's been a great year in the middle school. Hope everyone has a great summer and comes back refreshed to have another great year next year. So thank you, guys.
All right, also wrapping up our busiest month here in the high school, our junior and senior prom and post-prom were earlier this month. Both were a huge success, and I know the students really enjoyed it. So I want to give a public shout-out to the junior class advisors and the post-prom volunteers for an excellent job they did putting on those events. I know that a lot of hard work and extensive planning went into both of those, so thank you to those parents. Our seniors presented their senior projects on Wednesday, May eighth. The students did an outstanding job, and I want to give them a public shout-out for their efforts as well. We honored our senior award winners that night then at the awards night. Numerous scholarships were recognized that evening, totaling over $700,000 for this year's graduating class. But I will say, more is to come because there is a widespread delay with the FAFSA program at the federal level. So some students are still awaiting their award notification. But congratulations to all of our seniors on their accomplishments and their awards. Tournament action for our spring sports is still underway. Senior Hayden Nyheart advanced to regionals in Fosteria for shot put. She will compete this Wednesday evening. Sophomore Crossedyke advanced in 300-meter hurdles, and he will compete Wednesday as well. And then Hayden Nyheart and junior Elise Baldwin also advanced for discus, and they will compete on Friday evening. So we wish all of them the very best of luck as they represent us at regionals. Our seniors completed their last day of school this past Friday. They have graduation practice this Wednesday from nine to eleven. And then we are celebrating their commencement ceremony at two o'clock this Sunday in the high school gym. For all other grades, the last day of school is this Thursday. For the high school, we will begin the day with our end-of-year student academic awards in the high school gym, followed by a field day at the community park for the remainder of the day. So a reminder to all students and families, laptops will be turned in for the summer this Wednesday during the school day. And then Thursday will be a two-hour early release for all students. And then I also want to welcome our new employees tonight and thank them for coming. Excited to have them. But I am going to say you're free to leave if you'd like to because I know some of you have some other school events going on tonight or sporting events going on. So thank you again for coming. And that's all I have.
Laptop turn in the same for middle school as well?
Yes, yep, all on Wednesday.
So...
Good to see you guys. Thank you.
Keep her coming in.
See ya.
I think Tier just likes you because you are his best flopper, Michael.
Partially. I got hit a couple times.
Don't fall down on your way out.
All right, so do we have anything here from Fort County?
Yeah, real brief. So Garvin Miller came in and did the new building review. So we did kind of a fly-through view of the new welding and electrical labs, and it looks amazing. So that's exciting. And then we also jumped on the bus and did a tour of their project house. So they start a house from the ground up each year. The concrete's poured when they show up and they build it up from there. So beautiful house, and nobody will be moving into it here soon, so...
So remind me on the addition, the big award that you guys got, like when do they plan on like breaking ground and being done?
It will be like a three-year process overall. So a lot of the money has to be spent before the end of 2025.
Superintendent's report?
Yes, ma'am. Received a paper here from the Ohio Department of Education a workforce celebrating the district's overall five-star award for our report card for the 2022-23 year. And it was nice to be recognized for that, as you know, we do really well on our report cards. So banners coming for the district, and then we'll be having that displayed throughout the building. So that's quite an achievement for our district. Like all years, it's been a crazy few weeks. There's always a lot to do this time of the year. Special shout-out to our sports teams, our art department for a great art show, our music programs for providing us some great spring music. A shout-out to the students for their hard work during all of the state testing time. We do not teach to the test. We teach the standards and they test the standards. So we're pretty proud of the work we put into that. And the teachers, the aides, and everyone involved with that testing, they really do a really nice job of making the kids feel real comfortable so that they ease a lot of that stress during that two, three-week period. We had a great scholarship night, as Mr. Highlander already mentioned. And our high school music ensemble did an incredible job the other night at the Tin Caps Game singing the National Anthem. If you haven't seen it on Facebook, you should look it up because it was impressive. They sound awesome, so nice job on that. All of our grade-level trips and rewards, activities are all happening right now. We save a lot of that stuff to the end of the year. The end of the year is always filled with lots of fun activities and stuff that we feel like it's a good time for us to really celebrate with the kids after all the hard work they've done. I'm thankful for our educators and all the work that they do. And I know that they feel the same way here, that it's been a very busy year, but a great year. I encourage everyone, students and staff, to go home for the summer. Stay safe and come back refreshed in the fall, ready to work.
All right. So how are those tests looking so far?
Well, we're starting to get some preliminary results in that look quite nice. There's always work, but...
Yeah, that doesn't seem to go away.
No.
Any discussion before we move on to the meat of the agenda? All right, so I need a motion to go into minutes and financials, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Galen.
I'll second. Jen?
All right, Jen. All right, so we're going to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on April fifteenth, 2024, and special meeting on May thirteenth, 2024. The treasurer's consent agenda items include cash reconciliation as of April thirtieth, 2024, our financial statements for April of 2024, to approve amended official certificate of estimated resources for the fiscal year 2024 is presented. Total grand fund resources of $16,808,809.71, and total resources for all funds of $21,772,500. of $16,808,809.71, and total resources for all funds of $21,772,568.53. To approve fiscal year 2024 permanent appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of $15,125,157.57, and total appropriations for funds, excuse me, for all funds of $18,155,768.23. To approve the transfer of $122,500 from the general fund to the general fund, bus fund, and to approve fiscal year 2024 five-year forecast as presented. We are also going to accept the following donations. $96.12 from Hicksville PTO for middle school testing, $100 from Leonard Guilford for middle school student of the quarter, $100 from Kenton Sandy Brown for the art show, $101 from Travelin' Toms for the high school principal fund, $110 from Fat Pig Smokehouse LLC for high school principal fund, $200 from Yoder Body Shop for middle school student of the quarter, $200 from Chelsea Kelly DDS for cheerleading, $200 from Sherwood Mutual Trust Telephone Association, SMTA, for cheerleading, $200 from Empower Church for cheerleading, $200 from Sam Switzer Realty for cheerleading, $200 from APT Manufacturing Solutions for cheerleading, $500 from the Hicksville PTO for the high school principal fund, $500 from an anonymous donor for scholarship in memory of Noah Carrickson, and $500 from an anonymous donor for scholarship in memory of Denise Overmeyer. $560 from Hicksville PTO for middle school principal fund and $2,000 from Bob and Shelley Weatherhead for scholarship in memory of Francesca Weatherhead. Discussion and commentary.
Well, I will.
That was a lot.
That was a lot. There was a lot of donations.
Yeah, it was remarkable.
Where do I start? It's five-year forecast month, so.
Might as well get the exciting stuff out of the way first.
Yeah. Let's do that. I'm surprised you didn't have our guests stick around for the meat of the program. I had to kick them out. So anyways, the forecast, bear with me. The forecast is looking pretty strong throughout the rest of the five-year period here. As far as fiscal year '24, every revenue line item on the forecast has an increase over last year. On the flip side though, so did every expenditure line item. The best part of it though is the revenues have outpaced expenditures or projected outpaced expenditures by over $600,000. A lot goes into, which is one of the strongest years, strongest years since I've been here, to operate $600,000 in the black, but a lot of it has to do with the Fair School Funding Plan and this current biannual budget. The Fair School Funding Plan was set up to be phased in over a six-year period. Our current biannual budget is years three this year and four next year. Our legislators allowed the phase-in to continue, which will be brought back to the table when they look at the next biannual budget, but also on that, a big, huge part was is they changed the base cost funding from 2018 figures. Basically, it's a big calculation of what it costs to provide education in the state of Ohio and they use data from school districts throughout the whole state. Anyways, they changed that from 2018 to 2022, so it was a four-year shift there and therefore you throw it in the blender and we had a nice big increase in our foundation payment. So that helped drastically. Another thing that made a big difference was the property tax increase that was levied or the reevaluation, I should say. I know that's not probably popular with a lot of people, but anyways, that has helped as far as our funding and to be able to operate our district as we have and hopefully continue to get better. Another item that was a big increase was interest income, investment income, an increase of over $116,000 from last year. Obviously, over the last year or two, investment rates have gone up and hopefully we have taken advantage of that as well as possible and been able to put funds back into the general fund and as we've done a couple months ago, able to transfer, finally be able to help transfer those LFI funds, money into them, so when it comes to the maintenance of this building, the big option, the big thing such as HVAC and the carpet, et cetera, then hopefully we're prepared for that expense when that day comes. Along, also within one of the line items, the restricted federal grants and aid, that is up about $140,000 over last year. We recently, this past month, received $52,000, $53,000 in high-quality instructional material monies. This is a one-time thing that's in this current budget and the administrative staff is working on ways to spend that, but anyways, it will be high-quality instructional materials as is in the name of the funding, so that was money that's built into this forecast that is a one-time type of thing. The operating transfers in, which is really just goes from a portion of the general fund, the main one, to the bus portion of the general fund, as you see that $122,500, which is on this motion here, to pay for the two buses that have been ordered. And so we ordered one back in the fall. At the time, they were saying it could take up at least a year to get and then we ordered another one a couple months ago and both of them should be in before the beginning of the new school year. So anyways, between the two buses, it's $280,000. So it's quite an investment and obviously quite a bit of money, but we should have an updated, stronger fleet come here in another couple months. The purchase service line item has been, it's been unusual type of activity in a sense over the last several years with the COVID, the COVID funding and so forth. So there's been a lot of money, we will be receiving in excess of about $2 million when it's all said and done with COVID money that's been used different ways. Part of it is all the one-on-one machines. We use COVID money to purchase those. That is not in the forecast, but what it has done is helped save the general fund for half of the buy, all that equipment. But what does affect this more directly too is the, some personnel. We have used ARP monies, ESSER monies, et cetera, to pay for staffing and so there's been these different levels. Last year, like two or three people fell off. At the end of this year, going back to the general fund. This year, another several people will, this is the last year, be using the ESSER grant dollars. So next year, we'll be using general fund dollars to pay for them, which is originally what was used for these personnel. But also in the mix is this past year, we've added a number of aides, a lot of one-on-one and special needs situations where to be able to address the needs of these young children, we've had to bring on some staffing there. So that has affected the purchase service or the, I'm sorry, the personnel services cost going forward. I've taken in account somewhat for some retirements, not a lot, but some that I know, some that I'm projecting, and insurance benefits, next line item down, that a lot of it is correlation to wages except for you never know with the medical insurance, it's a large dollar amount for the district. This last year, we were very fortunate, it was like a three, three-and-a-half percent increase. Hopefully, we can get some more years like that, but it's not always that nice. You will see in this year, in the capital, I'll lay about $150,000. Next year is the 446 and that big increase there, as already mentioned, will be the buses and what Mr. Schaefer talked about earlier, that technology upgrade, that is in there too. So you'll see it jump from $150,000 to 446, so quite a jump, but that's the reason why, mostly for those two buses and the technology upgrades. We are below there in the lease agreement, property lease agreement for the building of the new building. We have, we're in year four now. There'll still be six more years of payments. Those payments, principal and interest come in about $387,000 a year, so that payment will be completed in December of '29. A few more years, but it is moving along. The building feels like it was opened yesterday and we've got four payments already made on it, so. The only year on here that is showing operating in the red is the fourth year out, 2027, and that's a fairly small amount. And kind of to wrap things up a little bit, as the future goes on, lots going to determine what happens with the next biannual budget with the state of Ohio. Will they continue the phase-in to the 100% of the Fair School Funding Plan? So after next year, they're going to be 67% of the way there. Are they going to get to year five and year six? That'll be critical along with will they move the base cost from 2022 to let's say at least 2024? If that falls flat, that's going to change this forecast quite a bit. If it comes, it's built that that will occur. So that is something to keep in mind. It can change these numbers really quickly. A lot of things can change those numbers, but that definitely could. Another concern out there is with the new valuation that's been going around in the state. Defiance County was 2023 tax valuation year, reappraisal year. That's going on throughout the entire state and there's counties that got hit a lot harder than what we did. But when that happens, we are, the state looks at us that we're richer. All of a sudden, our valuation goes up, we become richer and sometimes they start to pull money back. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out because one of the things is happening throughout the whole state, so comparatively, we're not getting any richer than anybody else, basically. So that could have a bigger impact maybe than that is on here, but maybe it won't, so we'll have to see how that plays out too. So this year, next year is also the last year of our current negotiated agreement, so year three is coming up and that'd be the 2004, 2024, 2025 school year, so the last three years of this will be under a new contract, so we'll have to, you know, see where that goes. Any questions?
I just have a comment. I would, I really appreciate the fact that you made an increase in the personnel services. I think for so long, we only had in there just what our agreement was for their raises and we never accounted for the increase in people that we were hiring. And when I looked back last fall, over this last several five-year forecast, we overspent in what you had predicted that we were going to spend in personnel services. Now granted, that money came out of different areas and yes, we needed that people and yes, it worked out in the whole budget, but I like the fact that you have built in more than just what we have stated as the rates over the ten years.
Yeah, I worked the build-in, not only what the base rate increase is, but the staff increases, what historical says about that, there's column movement, what historical says about that. And in our recent case, we've had, have added staff. A lot of it has to do with ramifications of a global pandemic where the needs have gone up and so we're addressing those to continue to provide the best possible education we can for our community, but I know you asked me specifically and I went to get to that and I haven't. So I was starting to dig up specific information on what you mentioned there and I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, but I like that it's at least we're increasing that area because we are outspending what, you know, more than just the base rate paid.
Yes, yeah, that is definitely part of it. As far as that line item, made up a number of things and I don't know where, districts kind of have an ebb and flow as far as where it goes with retirements and no retirements, an older staff, a younger staff, and I think maybe we'll start to kind of roll into one where we'll start to see maybe more sever, retirements. Time will tell, but you know, this last year, we didn't really have anybody, so that could change in a hurry too.
Done good work, have done good work in this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other? I did want to mention too, this past year, our school district income tax increased by three-and-a-half percent, not at the rate that had been the last few years. Community members, people all around were seeing some larger raises than they had and there's been a lot of success as far as income-wise. That is starting to slow, not only I think here, but also throughout the entire state and, but I still expect to see that increase over the, you know, the forecasted period. I still expect that and hopefully it will and we'll see where that goes from there too.
Thank you.
Yes.
And again, I would all of us agree the same about, maybe always jumping in and providing some for our students. Any other discussion? Okay, Mike, roll call, please.
Mr. Methbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to employment of certified staff, motion please.
I'll move. One second.
And Tyler, thank you. Recommend to approve the resignation from Melissa Liddell as teacher at the conclusion of the 23-24 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2023-24 school year. Andrea Deal as district mentor and Bailey Tier as district mentor. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for extended days during the 23-24 school year to be served after the scheduled school year, Nathan Farrell for 10 days. Recommend non-renewal certified supplemental contracts at the conclusion of the 23-24 school year or at the end of the activity. Recommend to approve Andrew Lawrence as summer school instructor at 3155 per hour. Sessions will be held from 8:00 AM to noon beginning June 5, 2024 and ending June 28, 2024. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Paul Overmeyer as classroom instructor with 14 years' experience at a master's degree for the 24-25 school year. This will be for 30% of a workday and shall be for the position of co-athletic director. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for extended days during the 24-25 school year to be served before and after the scheduled school year. Robin Chamberlain, 10 days. Nathan Farrell, 20 days. Paula Frye, 5 days. Jeff Haught, 10 days. Matt Hoffman, 25 days. Zach Kohlmeier, 10 days for band camp. Paul Overmeyer, 10 days. Jeff Schaefer, 35 days. Kelly Van Horn, 10 days. Amanda Wyman, 12 days. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 24-25 school year. Kirsten Kaufman, LPDC committee member. Andrea Deal, district mentor. Nathan Farrell, land lab coordinator. Emily Fenzer, Hicksville Initiative House leader. Chris Gagin, Hicksville Initiative House leader. Andrew Gagin, National Honor Society Club advisor. Joy Geiger, Hicksville Initiative House leader. Foreign Language Club advisor and co-coordination advisor. Elaine Gurkin, Fer drama club advisor and high school musical director. We're all in this together. Jeff Haught for co- Jeff Haught for co-athletic director and LPDC committee member. Matt Hoffman as LPDC committee member. Erin Highlander as LPDC committee member. A.J. Klausing as middle school student council advisor. Zach Kohlmeier for extra bands, pep bands specifically in the winter. Kathy Laney, academic team advisor, high school yearbook advisor, and newspaper advisor. Ryan Mizer, breakfast coverage. David Moore, head wrestling coach. Paul Overmeyer, co-athletic director. Emily Reese, co-science club advisor and district mentor. Lisa Savage as district mentor and district mentor coordinator. Lucas Smith as co-assistant football special teams coordinator coach. Christine Steeman as head girls basketball coach. Joey Stevenson as Hicksville Initiative House leader. Beth Stuckey, LPDC committee member and senior class advisor as well. And then Brent Soufal for LPDC committee member. Heather Taylor as a district mentor. Bailey Tier as a district mentor. Kristen Wendell for extra vocal duties, elementary musical director and show choir director. Amber Zachrich as co-coronation advisor and Natalie Zachrich as co-science club advisor. Recommend to approve all middle school, high school certified staff as detention monitors for the '24-'25 school year. Recommend to approve all middle school, high school certified staff as pride teachers for the '24-'25 school year. Recommend to approve all middle school, high school certified staff as zero-hour teachers for the '24-'25 school year. Recommend to approve Missy Lee and Brianna Kohler as kindergarten jumpstart camp instructors from August 12th to August 16th, 2024, at a rate of $31.55 per hour. Recommend to approve all certified staff in grades K through 4 for after-school intervention at a rate of 32, 34 per hour for the '24-'25 school year to be funded through federal Title 1A grant funds or general fund. Recommend to approve the following as substitute teachers for the '24-'25 school year. Zanya Battershell, Paula Campbell, Tony Egley, Amy Haber, Nancy Swift, Mike Hedley, Paul Overmeyer, Pam Payne, and Jeff Strata. And to recommend to approve the updated certified substitute list provided monthly by Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for the '24-'25 school year. I can breathe now. So, discussion, conversation. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. And I will need a motion to go to employment of classified staff.
Are we going to do the addendum now or later?
All right. Do you have that? We can do the addendum now.
There will be one certified and one classified, too.
Is it not?
Take four.
My apologies. I did not see take four. I saw take three. Thank you. All right, so we do need a motion for the addendum.
For employment of certified staff?
For employment of certified staff.
I'll second.
All right. Jen? Recommend to approve the resignation from Madison Weller as teacher at the conclusion of the '23-'24 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Madeline Bragg as elementary guidance counselor with three years' experience at a master's degree for the '24-'25 school year. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Christine Steeman as classroom instructor with six years' experience at a master's degree for the '24-'25 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for extended days during the '24-'25 school year to be served before and after the scheduled school year. For Madeline Bragg, 5 days.
Mrs. Bragg could not be here tonight. We did invite her, but she had obligations at her previous school that we, she will be our new elementary counselor.
Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Okay, back to the employment of classified staff on the main agenda.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Recommend to approve the resignation from Jake Bradbury as bus driver effective April 14th, 2024. Recommend to approve Kelsey Monroe as a classified substitute for the '23-'24 school year. Recommend non-renewal classified supplemental contracts at the conclusion of the '23-'24 school year or at the end of the activity. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to the following classified staff as career professionals for the '24-'25 school year. Mariah Anderson, Morgan Bostatter, Tamara Chamul, Trista Franklin, Mary Glass, Karen Miser, Shelby Ori, Kaylee Reed, Hope Snyder, Dawn Van Horn, Jasmine Walters, Shelley Weatherhead, Elizabeth Yaser, and Sandy Zubor. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Mallory Sarchay as middle school secretary with zero years' experience for the '24-'25 school year. Recommend to approve Morgan Bostatter as kindergarten jumpstart camp assistant from August 12th to August 16th, 2024, at the rate of $15 per hour. Recommend to approve the following as classified substitutes for the '24-'25 school year. Jake Bradbury, Gail Countryman, Teresa Evans, Elizabeth Knox, Pam Payne, Madison Stephen Keller, Jeff Sleisman, Rick Straley, Nancy Swift, and Nicole Yoder. Recommend to approve the updated classified substitute list provided monthly by the Ohio Educational Service Center for the '24-'25 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the '24-'25 school year. Megan Cobre as cheerleading advisors grades 9 to 12 and cheerleader assistant grades 9 to 12, both for one-third. Josh Flannery as co-assistant football special teams coordinator coach. Trista Franklin as cheerleading advisor and cheerleading assistant grades 9 through 12, both for one-third, and also as co-sophomore class advisor. Brody Langham as co-assistant football special teams coordinator coach. Alex McLaughlin, assistant volleyball coach. Brad Ori, mini-aces football coach. Nick Parker, co-assistant football special teams coordinator coach. Mike Ritchie, co-assistant football special teams coordinator coach. Amanda Ridgway as coaching class advisor and co-prom advisor. Mallory Sarchay as co-cheerleading advisor, grades 7 to 8. Liam Slattery as elementary yearbook advisor. Dylan Welch as head boys basketball coach. Ryan Wonderly as co-assistant football special teams coordinator coach. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the '24-'25 school year. Ashley Hammond volleyball, Randy Van Scoder volleyball. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts pending certification for the '24-'25 school year. Ashley Baum flag instructor. Jen Bergman, elementary musical director assistant, as well as high school musical director assistant. Ashley Hammond as co-junior class advisor and co-prom advisor. Destiny Wales as co-cheerleading advisors, grades 7 through 8. And Riley Whitesell as cheerleading advisor and cheerleading assistant, grades 9 through 12, and again at one-third. Discussion?
Just that the aides and pairs that we're approving tonight as a one-year contract, the reason they're given a one-year contract is because if we don't need them, then we're not tied into a longer contract that way, so... Just to clarify.
Mike, roll call, please.
All right, Madam President. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. We'll move on to the addendum for the employment of classified staff. I need a motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Galen. Recommend to approve Kaylee Reed as kindergarten jumpstart camp assistant from August 12th to August 16th, 2024, at a rate of $15 per hour. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. I need a motion to recommend Paige Levy as a classified substitute for the '24-'25 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Jen and Eric, thank you. And roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
I'm staying.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes 4 to 0 with one abstention. Uh, I need a motion to recommend to approve Noel and Clark Methman as a classified substitute for the '24-'25 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
And roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
I'm staying.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes 4 to 0 with one abstention. All right, we are, is there another one of these anywhere? Are we good now?
Okay, I believe.
Just those two. Yeah, we're going to move on to, we're moving on to services. And again, I need a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Tyler.
I'll second.
Thank you, Galen. To recommend to approve a service agreement with the Fines County Board of Developmental Disabilities, DCPD, to provide educational services from August 24th to June 2025, August of 2024, excuse me, to June of 2025. The district will be assessed $6,000 per student for the excess cost. And this is our normal agreement, so... Okay, any discussion? All right, Mike, roll call, please.
Same price.
Yeah, same price.
Yeah, same as this past year. This year, it jumped $1,000, I think, per student from the prior year. So this will be two years in a row at the same price. Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Moving on to other business, motion please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Tyler. Recommend to approve the 2024 list of graduates pending completion of all requirements. Recommend to approve an overnight trip for the high school boys basketball team from June 14th, 2024, to June 16th, 2024, at the Finley Team Camp. Recommend to approve participation in the national school breakfast lunch program in the Title 1, Title 2A, Title 4, and the IDEA programs, Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act for 2024-2025 school year. Recommend to approve the certification of standards governing types of foods and beverages sold on school premises, report from the Ohio Department of Education for the '24-'25 school year. Recommend to approve the following breakfast and lunch prices for the 2024-2025 school year. Grades K through 12 breakfast is $1.75. The adult breakfast is $2. Extra milk is 50 cents. Grades K to 4 lunch is $3.25. Grades 5 to 12 lunch is $3.50, and adult lunch is $4.25. Recommend to approve the attached football staff spreadsheet for the 2024-2025 school year. Recommend to authorize the superintendent to grant approval for teams involved in overnight state tournaments for fall, winter, and spring sporting events. Recommend to purchase $138,320.95 of category 2 equipment from AIC LLC during the E-rate funding year 2024-2025, as specified in the attached specifications and price quotations. Recommend to approve $35,986 quote from TND Interiors, Inc. for labor and material to remove existing flooring and stair treads and install new. Recommend to approve the following new and revised Board of Education bylaws and policies. These will cover the address of the school, motions, regular meetings, evaluations of the superintendent, career technical ed programs, adoption of textbooks, student assessment and academic intervention services, third grade reading guarantee, employment of substitutes, termination and resignation, employment contract, termination or resignation, health services, transportation, bus driver certification, transportation for non-routine trips, transportation by vehicles other than school buses, and incidental transportation of students by a private vehicle.
I would like to recommend removing 2510. I don't think we should include it because it doesn't align with our practices. We either need to change our practices or we need to change the policy.
Okay, so we do have some conversation on the floor then, it sounds, as necessary for the adoption of textbooks.
Just pull it.
All right, we will put it to a vote. All right, so...
We've discussed that multiple times. It's still not right?
It's still not on there exactly the way I think that it was discussed. So we do have a motion on the floor by Jen to remove 2510 on the adoption of textbooks. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike, you get a chance to, you ready for a roll call on that particular rule? Or do we just add that to our overall roll call? How does that work?
Well, I'm not 100% sure, but I think we could just include it in our overall roll. Yeah, that, recommending to approve that motion with the removal of 2510.
Okay, and that will go into, all right. Any other discussion?
Did we make any changes to the lunch menu?
The pricing structure, I was going to ask that.
Yes, there was a 25 cent increase on some of them. Let's see. K4 lunch went from $3 to $3.25. 512 lunch went from 3 and 1/4 to $3.50. And adult lunch went from 4 to 4 and 1/4.
And just briefly, I would like to clarify the spreadsheet because I actually sat hot down and hadn't explained exactly what happened there. So, and I think, Mike, you probably know this too. They just put all of the money available for that, those particular coaching areas, and they went hot and divvied it up depending on job description and time and also experience. So that's why you see some numbers are a little bit different.
I wondered that.
We did. There was one kind of unusual occurrence on the TND interiors for the existing floors, the stair treads, et cetera. It had been quite a while since we had an original quote out there that Eric had done. And he went back to get it requoted, and the price actually went down. So their prior quote was $39,101, and then they came in at $35,986, over $3,000. So anyways, which helped them get the bid because there was another company out there that was in between those two months. So it's just...
That doesn't happen very often.
Yes, you don't see prices go down too often, but there's one example.
Things are going in a good direction. All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes 5-0. Anything about old business? Any old business that we want to discuss?
I had one comment. I've been stopped by many people about our graduation. Ms. Olivia who came and spoke with us, and they were very happy to see that we made that choice. So people are watching, and people appreciate the conversation, so just wanted to let that be known.
Can we discuss the leadership presentation, some of that stuff? Is that old business or new business?
No, I think we have discussion, and so we can, we can absolutely do that.
I, they did a great job. I think they brought up so many good points. I just wonder if, in, after that, just thinking over things, thinking about like ticket prices, student participation at games and stuff, could we start out with, like, Mr. Schaefer is awesome at it, doing some kind of survey to our students, you know, did you come to games?
Yeah, like an engagement survey.
Yeah, like...
What's keeping you from coming to the games?
What would hap, what would help you come to see more games?
Yes, exactly. Like, start with that kind of information. Because I think they brought up some good points, and I think they did a really good job of presenting. Oh, absolutely. And I just, and I'm all for, I think, a lot of us voiced opinion about lowering those ticket prices. And just, I think this would be a good starting point in that venture, to find out, you know, if that, if that would make a difference, how many, you know, that could be. Just my thought.
Yeah, no, that's a great idea.
Keith, what do you think?
Yep, working on something like that. It wouldn't be till next year. It wouldn't be till next year. Do we want to pick a date for facilities tour in June?
I... Yeah, I was gonna actually bring that up when we went to our next meeting, it's only to be, but...
Okay.
I did know if we could combine it. Or is that too late?
Combine it with a board meeting?
Yes.
I don't know if I'd do that.
So just separate them like we have been doing and meet at a certain time down somewhere?
Well, we might be able to do that, actually. I mean, June agenda should be fairly light if you want to just...
I think so.
Do our regular board meeting and then go tour the facilities afterwards? Would that... Something like that work?
Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Because it'll still be light?
Yeah, exactly. Well, I don't know. I can check with him and see.
They're the same day, I just don't know what time.
Right.
As long as Griffin's not playing baseball. That's the only caveat.
Well, he...
Breaks it down, if you have three days, that's it.
It'd be nice if we could have like Jeff Hott, too.
He's usually not on the play days. Listen to Mike.
And even if, I mean, if we could technically, like, move our meeting back to, say, 6:00 PM that night, so that we have an hour to tour. So they could be done before the meeting, is what I'm saying.
Tour first?
If it...
If it causes some...
A conflict, yeah.
Oh, I see. You mean with Eric?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll check. Yeah. Let's plan on our regular time, 5:30, and then we'll see what we need to do, if we need to adjust it, we can still adjust it.
Yeah, because you're right, the June meeting will be very... It should be very brief, one would think. We have no unannounced guests.
One thing, I don't know if it's really old business, but in a sense it kind of is, about, we have often talked about our security and safety of our building, and that a lot of things have been done over the years. Well, today, received $30,000 of grant money from the Attorney General Office's office, and it is to be used to help link schools, the school with law enforcement. So, without going into too many more details, but anyways, this covers like 90% of the cost to be able to continue to bring in more safety, more security measures, harden our district, harden the school from potential bad actors.
That's great news.
On one of those Ohio School Board Association, they had sent an article about someone coming in and filming. Did you guys get a chance to read that article?
I didn't see that.
Yeah, there is an article about if someone comes in, because it is a public space, they have the right to film, and a lot of times it's very... They're trying to get a reaction. So I recommend reading that. It was interesting, and it got me thinking about a few things about what maybe the teachers should be prepared to say or do, or something like that. But that was, I think, two weeks ago, but something, it was interesting to read.
Yeah, my friend and I had a conversation about that because something like that happened to her... To her child. Yeah, it was an interesting...
There's a few legalese that you could use to stop it, but it's very difficult because it is a public place. It can be kind of dangerous.
We will be moving into executive session, there will be no action taken afterward. While our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, June 17th, is that okay with everyone? Okay.
June 17th?
June 17th. 5:30? And I would say maybe back here around 6:50 for executive session, give people a chance to use the restroom soon?
Oh, yeah, that should be good.
Okay, and I think everyone else?
I'll chat with Erin, but I think... We'll see.
Okay, we'll see.
Yeah.
We are going to go into executive session for reason number one, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Any questions? So we can... Yep, we need a motion? Thank you. Jen? And a second?
I'll second.
Galen? Okay. And roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five zero. We have a brief break, and we'll be back here in five minutes. Thank you.